We're either opting in, or we're opting three, or we're taking ordinance four.
No, opting out is ordinance three.
So we're
Ordinance three, right now we're
Ordinance three, or ordinance four is on the table.
Someone's got a word in the house.
Right now we're
It's not on the table right now.
Only three is on the table.
Who did this, we're gonna
So last week, yeah.
Or
Now, what you told you to do for the opt-in?
That was at the direction of the mayor after the
After our meeting of four to one now?
No, that was before that.
That was what council authorized and said, go ahead and do the ad hoc committee, okay? We voted to do that, then ad hoc committee was formed, and then it was a planning board ad hoc committee.
But that's not entirely accurate, man.
At the last meeting, I thought we did four to one opt-out.
That's not entirely accurate. It's entirely accurate, the vote.
Council authorized an ad hoc committee comprised primarily of you and Mrs. Sparks.
Correct.
To represent the interests of the five of us.
It was a planning board ad hoc committee.
It was a planning board ad hoc committee.
And you kicked me out.
No, no, it's an ad hoc committee of council.
When you sought council's concurrence, it was you and Mrs. Sparks. And then, once we agreed, the first thing you did was kick Mrs. Sparks out.
It was supposed to be a planning board ad hoc committee.
She's on the panel. She's on the planning board. Did you kick her out?
Not only did he kick me out, but he kicked me out on the eleventh hour.
You could put words in my mouth, whatever you want.
That's not exactly, that's not exactly what happened.
You wanna see the email?
When I spoke to Mr. Laberty, I said that I want this to be a planning board ad hoc committee. You can't have two members of council, you can only have three members. And it would be one member of the council, four members of the planning board.
That's not true.
Is that true, Mr. Laberty? Would it have been illegal for Mrs. Sparks to sit on that committee?
That's not true.
No, this was an ad hoc committee of council, of the planning board, Mr. Laberty. You didn't even guide me that night, just wanted to get the information with the vote. That's fine.
All right.
But what we're on confused is, is I, I mean, I don't know, I got chemo brain, but I thought the last thing we had was a four to one vote to opt-out. And I just don't know why it keeps coming back up.
That is correct. And I'm trying to explain to council that we need to reconsider what we're doing here because if we have an opportunity where some business, and in fact, it could get a cultivation license, and we can make that kind of money, I think we owe it to the taxpayer. I really do.
We need something in which we can have confidence. Unfortunately, this process has changed direction every time you have a new idea. It is very difficult to have confidence in anything that was born of you. It's very difficult, and this is far too important an issue. This is far too important an issue to take that chance.
Please.
All right.
Wouldn't you appropriate at this point, to make some sort of a straw vote?
Why don't we just vote?
I already know, I already know.
You can just call it, it's an update. Just vote.
If council, if no other members of council have anything that they would like to contribute, the appropriate thing is to call for a vote.
Somebody make a motion.
A motion would be to adopt ordinance number three on second reading.
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance three on second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's no further discussion or call.
Yes.
Mr. Solicitor, please enunciate the consequence of a yes vote.
A yes vote is that you are adopting ordinance number three, which is the opt-out ordinance under cream.
Yes.
Mrs. Sparks?
Yes.
Have I told Miss Owen?
No.
I'm sorry, no. Okay, Miss Owen?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Basker?
Yes.
Mayor Vanessa?
The council's making a serious mistake, no. We have the ability to make money, and we're saying no.
We're not saying no.
We have, we have to say no.
We're not saying no, we're saying wait.
We're lining up to do, we're lining up to be able to have that ability, and we're saying no.
We're saying you want more income.
We just want to be as well informed as you are. You had every opportunity to inform us until now.
You said it all, record numerous times all year long, you don't want to speak to this.
You can email him, I think the money can help any of us at any time.
We never give them money.
What's the next bit of business?
Resolution. We have, um, resolution sixty-six twenty-two-one, approval of legal license for the Land County Gaining Bar. Somebody make a motion.
Can I make a motion?
For the twenty-two-one. Okay? On second. You could take part. All favor. That one, what we were supposed to done last year, but apparently because of COVID, it kind of got passed us. So now, I make a motion to approve legal license, um, for the year of twenty-one, twenty-two, resolution sixty-seven. Is there a second? All favorable. Aye. Next, we have sixty-eight, approval for the false ability increase for the Low Sap firefighters for twenty-twenty-one, and approval for the twenty-twenty contribution of Low Sap. Somebody make a motion. All favorable. I'll make a full call on this one.
Yes, Mr. Bill?
Yes.
Miss Owen?
Yes.
Mrs. Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Basker? Mayor Vanessa?
Yes. Next, we have approval of false ability increase for all the employees for twenty-twenty-one. Did we do this last year?
Yes.
Somebody make a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go call.
Yes, um, Mr. Bill?
Yes.
Miss Owen?
Yes.
Mrs. Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Basker?
Yes.
Mayor Vanessa?
Next, we have the, um, the former reports, we have the clerks, the municipal court, the fire company, the public works, and the zoning officer. I did not receive a zoning officer's report.
Yeah, I just emailed that this evening, uh, mayor, I just got it, um, I just got it on Friday, so I have not had a chance to make the conversation.
Should we run table this?
Or every weekend, I'm sorry, I go
I have, I have a zoning report, I can give it orally as it relates to, uh, highlights of the actions of the zoning officer.
I would like to read it, rather than just
Oh, there's a report in there, too.
Okay, so I don't have it, we'll hold it, table it.
No, I, I queried him earlier, it's his responsibility to report to me, it's my responsibility to report to council. You don't have to take it seriously if you don't want to.
You're the very one that instituted a rule here with the bill that says if we don't have the report, if we don't have the report, the Congress doesn't, it's not gonna be here.
The motion is in front of us. Mayor? It is in front of us.
Where?
Right there, Google Drive. We've all got it.
I don't have it, I don't have my, I don't
Why are you in a motion to hear?
So, the problem on Sixth Avenue is unresolved, it's status quo because the, the landowner did not show up for court, and the state attorney general is giving forgiveness to people who don't show up in a COVID era. The Tharp matter is moving along, though there is some challenge in communication there as well. Uh, the zoning officer spoke with the court clerk this evening, and apparently there is harmony in the mailing addresses they're using, but this guy claims he's not getting it. Mr. Barra spoke for himself. Bookers resolve, uh, one thirty-five Ninth Avenue is being resolved between the city solicitor and the attorneys for the bank to propose on the property. Is that correct, Mr. Solicitor?
Very good.
Go on, Mr. Wagner. Wagners are moving forward slowly, but they're making progress. The truck, the guy who lives on Seventh East and has a truck, has three trucks on the property. And there was some suspicion on the part of neighbors and others in the city that he was running a commercial trucking company out of a residence. In fact, is the only driver that, that uses one truck there, another truck, and he showed me, another truck that he has there is for racing. It's a, it's a semi tractor-trailer, uh, modified to be a racing truck, and that's all it is. The other truck is an older truck, very similar to the one he uses every day, that is just for parts, it doesn't have tags on it, it doesn't go on the road. So, he is, he's just a working guy trying to, trying to do what he can for his family. Mr. Carrignato agrees with that and is satisfied with the explanation. That is the extent of the zoning report. Somebody make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the zoning officer's report.
All favor. Aye. Aye. What about the other reports here, the fire company, the public works, municipal court? Okay, so we have all that. Motion to accept the fire company's report?
Second.
Motion to accept all of the reports. Are they all here?
They were just, they were just
It's all in front of you.
They were just emailed, um, by the clerk, by this before we started, so.
I didn't see a municipal court report, I saw the rest of them.
The municipal court has not been submitted to me.
Okay. So, all but the municipal court, modify the amendment, please.
I didn't see the public works.
I will, I will modify my amendment to include that we will accept all of the reports in front of us, with the exception of the court report. Second. All in favor? Aye. Um, next, we have new business, the Dorothy Volunteer Fire Company. Do we have any correspondence on that? No, phone call. Okay, then, we were not all privy to it, I, you know, it's been said over and over, we have to have correspondence, we have to have something in front of us. I'll bring it up anyway. So, Chief Hand asks that, uh, we be mindful of their needs when it comes to distribution of the CARES Act funding, that they're our first responders relative particularly to EMT and emergency medical services, and that, uh, they would like to be benefactors, uh, in some of that care, the CARES funding that we get. I will get back to Chief Hand and ask him to submit a written request.
We actually made that new business number one goes with number four.
We have a vaccination event?
Um, Yes, I wanted to know, um, if we want to have a vaccination event here. We can have a public works, I'm sorry, not public works, we can have it here in this building. We can do it from like four to six, so it takes some people that are working during the day, that if they would like to come, they can do that. Um, it would be done by the health department, and they would have
The county.
Yes, yes, it would be done, we would just provide the building, and we would tell our residents about it.
That's good.
And we would do that, I mean, it's a public safety issue if people want to do it. It's a personal issue for everyone, but I think people that can't travel somewhere else, it'd be nice to have it close to them if they prefer, if they want to do that.
You betcha with Mrs. Don, I mean, for Mrs. Don, could this be either the one child or two children?
Um, they actually have, um, Johnson and Johnson. Well, they have, they have, they offer two different ones, they offer Johnson and Johnson, and Moderna, if I'm not mistaken on that. And I don't, I had the phone, the note on my phone, I apologize, I left it in my room.
So they tell you what they're gonna offer?
They told me the two that they were gonna offer. It was definitely Johnson and Johnson, and if I'm, I'm going off my, my memory here, I think it was Moderna, too.
So then they have to come back?
We would have to do a second one if that's what, if somebody chooses to do that, exactly. Um, they want, I was thinking when I talked to them, that we would do it in like three weeks. We would, we would do it like at the end of
The law?
Yeah, well, I don't have my, I don't have a calendar either. I lost one on my phone. Um, I did, I did discuss a date with them, um, that they could accommodate, and it would be enough for us to
Get the word out?
Get the word out. I think for some reason it was the twenty, the twenty-seventh, if I'm not mistaken. You would give us like three weeks to get people, and get an idea of who, who is, um, who wants to sign up for it, who wants to, um, so they would know how many to bring with them, so that wouldn't be any waste.
I make a suggestion that we should send out a notification, and anybody who's interested
Yeah.
What they would do is, uh, go to our municipal website to sign up, and then we'll know how many people are interested to, uh,
Yeah, how would they sign up?
They could, they could send anyone to respond.
You don't have one master right now, do you?
Well, you can do it to council and then
For us?
Yeah. Can you have a name?
He's too stupid.
I thought people do, uh, make comments to the
Just in general?
Yeah.
Uh-uh.
I mean, you know, I'm not a computer guy myself.
Yeah, there was, that's on my, it has to be some of the responsible components. So, what I can do is, we can, I'm gonna go with the date that they proposed to me, which is sometime that week, and I believe it's the twenty-seventh.
They're gonna put you up.
They can email me directly. They can email me directly, so I can get an
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. We'll put that on the website. What does council feel about that?
I think they should email the clerk, and then the clerk will give us the information. That should be a public record. It should go to the clerk.
You want that public record?
It's a public record, it should go to the clerk. So the bill can monitor how many people have signed up, and they can contact the county and all that. Mr. Ford may have an idea.
Waymoth did this, I'm sorry, um, mom, Waymoth did this already. So they may have something in mind as far as people being notified of how their event worked. I didn't address council when I said that.
So, I like the idea, it's Well, the clerk also works in Waymoth, so why don't you, we'll figure out how we do this, I'll give you a call and we'll discuss it.
Well, no, I need to know, because I need to reach out to them tomorrow morning, first thing in the morning. Yes.
So we need to pick the date now?
Well, I already had the date.
I already had the date, I don't have it on my, I have it on my phone, but I don't have my phone. I got that home.
She thinks it's
I think it's the twenty-second, yes.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-second.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
How many's on?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. Yeah, I don't, I don't have my, I have on the notes in my phone to tell everybody, I'm sorry. We have to vote.
We'll, we'll vote on the date now, and then we'll figure out all the logistics left to proceed to
Yeah, vote on the event.
Well, no, why, why wouldn't we do it tonight?
I make a motion that we support, uh, Mrs. Owen's, uh, vaccination event, and it's gonna be for July the twenty
I, I
I'm supporting the event for, yeah.
I mean, we clarified.
For a date later.
For the date, can I make the suggestion?
It's a big, it could be for a date later in July, between the hours of four and six.
Yeah.
Did you make that motion today?
Um, I make a motion that we move forward with the vaccine, um, event, vaccination event, um, the last week of July, between the hours of four and six.
Second.
All favor?
Wait, and with that, so I'm, if I can add to that, um, you're saying that you want the
I think it should go to the clerk.
Okay, so the clerk's gonna get it online, go to, go on the website, and the clerk's gonna watch that.
Is it gonna come in from the
You, you get all that information.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I said I would be willing
There's not a web form.
That's fine with me, if you're willing to do it, but if you want it to come to the city clerk, it should come, cityclerk@estomatter.org through email. Is that how you were gonna do it, or?
I'm thinking that's all she got.
Okay. It's up to council, but there was a motion that the mayor made, that Miss Owen seconded to support this.
That's correct.
I, I changed that, actually, I said wait a second.
Oh, oh, okay, all right. Good, I'll take that off.
Let's redo this over again, now, let's redo it over again, because we had a motion the second, and we're getting to the vote of it, and now it's been changed.
Well, no.
Well, the second withdrew.
The second withdrew.
And Julie made a motion, and I said, hang on a second.
All right, so, but you made the motion now, right, Miss Owen?
I would like to have a vaccination event on the last week of July, for the date that the health department tells me is good for them, for the hours from four to six. And then, I would prefer that it's emailed to me.
I'm gonna have to wait and handle it, make it easier.
And gets emailed to you, that's part of the motion?
Yes.
The registration?
Yes.
The registration, okay. Is there a second? Okay. Did it all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have, um, the road cleanup. What is that?
Uh, yes, so we just discussed at a couple meetings ago that, and I spoke to Judd, um, we have money from last year that we didn't use, and we have money this year for that. So I would like to do the road cleanup event that we already discussed, that we wanted to do, but I'd like to increase the amount to use up the funds from last year and this year. Um, but I'm also thinking, do you want to put a cap on it as to how many people, because sometimes there was, I've heard, and I don't know for sure, because I was not involved then, but there was sometimes thirty or plus people that wanted to participate in this event.
What roads?
First one, for sure.
Uh, there's cer, there are different roads.
And what money's involved?
Um, the money that we get from
Clean communities.
Organizations, yes.
So, and who gets the money?
Every municipality gets an allocation in the state, there's about two million that
Like four H.
Oh, so four H comes out and cleans the road, and then they get a sticker for having done that.
Oh, sorry, I thought you had to put what, what, how we got the money, yes, it's for civic organizations.
And how much are we calling that?
Two fifty, used to be.
Actually, it used to be three hundred.
So, what we have from last year, too, right?
So you have last year's and this year's money?
And this year's, yes. But I, I suggested to Miss Owen that last year, in the last few years, it's been like twenty-eight groups. And some of these groups are like quasi, like there might be one or two residents, one that might be some organization in Maze Landing or somewhere else, which is okay.
Right.
But then that cuts down on the real groups that are in Estom, so I'm just suggesting, because I've done this for years, I'm doing it in other towns, maybe cap it at maybe ten groups at the most, and the maximum that I give out in other towns is five hundred bucks. And then maybe next year you can do more, or you can do two a year, there's all kinds of ways that you can do this.
So
But it's better coordinated.
If we're going from twenty-eight groups now down to ten, I mean, there's gonna be quite a number of disgruntled people.
Got that right.
Well, it could go to twelve or fifteen, but twenty-eight seems like it's, it's hard to manage.
We have some long roads, we've got a number of roads to
I'm sorry, if twenty-eight groups show up to clean roads for a cost of
Yeah.
Two hundred and fifty dollars
Blackwell's gonna take three.
Each, or in total?
No, two hundred and fifty dollars per group.
Oh, per group, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
Yes, yeah.
So we're gonna call Cala Quacko, how many?
Three.
They do three?
One for each sport.
What if instead of, uh, instead of limiting the number of groups, we did it on staggered dates with a limited number of groups on each date?
That would work out better.
Well, that's how, that's how it's always been now, that's how, like, the group would email and say, yes, we're gonna participate, and these are the days that we're gonna do it.
I thought Clean Community Day was always one day.
They don't do it on the same day.
No.
In the past, I think
And the twenty-eight groups, all about two hundred and fifty dollars.
May I, Mr. Kent?
Yep.
For the most part, most of the groups do it on the one day, and then some of them go a week before or a week later, because they're not able to have But we do pick a date, and that's when it's done, generally it's done after, um, Halloween. Those kids, young kids, they throw their rockers, they throw their mischief might stuff out and whatever, so it's usually that's when it's done, it's after.
And is it munis, old municipal roads, okay?
Yes.
Just not, not the county roads, just
Hey, you do Cape May and Cumberland.
Yeah.
I mean, you can
You do Cape May and Cumberland, I'm wrong again, I should just shut up.
For the record, I didn't say that.
It's not limited just to municipal roads, you can do county roadways as well.
We're in the municipality.
We're in the municipality.
We think every road, we darn near did, a once over, is it right?
For that, for that, I think.
In the past, we tried.
They should have vests and adults and
Who provides all that?
We have all.
All vests and everything?
Yeah.
So, my first question is, do we want to limit the amount of participation?
I don't think that's a good idea. If we've had twenty-eight groups, and then we start eliminating, who's gonna be the bearer of bad news, the top, the top-line group? We're not gonna use you this year, we'll consider you another time.
Well, some of these groups too, mayor, are, I, I think are not affiliated with the town anymore. But what I think maybe is, Miss Owen can look at the list from the last year, okay, and then you guys can choose.
I don't have the list.
No, I can, yeah, you can list, and, and see, I mean, maybe you want to do all twenty.
Yeah, but, but Judd, we, we, this is a big city, we're fifty-four square miles, fifty-five square miles, that's a lot of walking around in the You need all these groups. You need those.
Is there a minimum number, so you, you're grouped from wherever, you're gonna show up with at least four people, or what happens?
I mean, can you imagine having one group doing just Ninth Avenue alone, that's a long street.
I, I do a municipality that's, I don't know if it's fifty-four square miles, but done it for years, they do it twice a year, they alternate the groups, most of the kids come from us, the high school, there's about maybe eight, nine, ten groups, eleven groups, uh, and sometimes they'll bring out fifteen or twenty kids, like they just have as high as a hundred and fifty kids on one day. But they don't cover the whole town, they only cover certain areas, because then they'll have it in the fall, they'll have it in the spring, then they'll have it in the fall, and then they'll cover other parts of it.
But this year only having one?
But, yeah, you can just have one, one day, or just, just one cleanup.
When I spoke to Mr. Barbetta, he said that it was normally done within one month, within the month that different groups came and
Yeah, and most towns just have one, one cleanup day a year. Because then they can take the funds, and they can buy trash containers, and can buy some other limited things that they can do with the money if they can be Why don't you see who signs up first? I, I think you just, just take it and run with it, and
What, what, so what then would we, uh, would we resolve, that we just, would we pick a period in time that, to which Mrs. Owen would, would hold her, uh, her groups?
I think Miss Owen should just make a recommendation to the council, like, if we're all in grants, that we're gonna have a cleanup day.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's have a cleanup day, and, and coordinate it, I'll help you with some advice there, I'll give you the list of the, of the people and all that, and
Run with it. Run with it, I strongly recommend we keep all the groups intact.
That's fine, you can add more if you want.
I make a motion, we give ownership of the road cleanup to Mrs. Owen.
Yay! Second, third.
Well, I, I really wanted to do the, the first fifteen that signed up, so they could get more money.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to do.
It's council
First off, I think we already decided, uh, several months ago, when, uh, Mrs. McDonald was on Zoom, and we indicated that we are going to increase the amount, but we didn't say anything about decreasing the, it's, uh, group participation. We did say that we give a little bit more money, because we had some money that we didn't use from the previous year, but we still need to keep all the groups intact.
I think that this should have something to do with Estom, uh, like when we did four H, there were eight here, kids that belonged to Estom Manor that were employed, so four H is included, basically it was the people from Estom Manor that went to clean up. And then, they did their part, the other people in Ollantay County that lived in Maze Landing, they did their different things, but when I did it with the four H thing, it was, it was where you had to have people that were involved, that were in Estom Manor, that were part of the group.
Is there a local Girl Scout?
You're talking about this now, HSA is not gonna meet till September, as an example. The clubs and everything at the school are not gonna meet until September.
You, I think we're talking for the first one, aren't you talking for November?
Right, but she, you said, saying the first fifteen that sign up. How, how are they gonna get together and decide they even want to do it?
I think that they should have something to do with Estom Manor, if they have something to do with Estom Manor, then they can participate, no cap.
Will it table until the September meeting?
Yeah.
If more information put together, I had no idea.
I think they did the list from last year.
Okay, so, Judd, can you send that list out to everyone, because and that's the only, that's the only items that you, that everyone needs to make a decision with? Is the list from the last, um, I guess, two years back, you think, good?
Yeah, I can, pretty much the same ones, but
Same ones, okay. And then we can make a decision on what we want to do from there, right, so, table it.
All right, so, we have, um, we table it until next month. The CARES Act, what is that about?
It's attached to number one.
I have two things under Old Business, actually. Although I'm, I'm not, we're still New Business, I, you know, we have a opening on planning board, I'm going to make an appointment to, uh, Chris Kelly of one seventy-two, for that, and if you can send it, my mother would be, uh, planning which I prepared this show, send him a packet for our coming
What's the name again?
Chris Kelly.
Chris Kelly.
Let me make sure I got the address correct. Christopher Kelly of one seventy-two, fifth. CARES Act, is that actually supposed to be the American Rescue Recovery Act, Judd?
Yes.
Okay.